...to order. My colleagues, I guess everyone knows is that we have lost a member of this legislature and the island is in a state of mourning. And I want to do something, of course, in memory of Speaker Pangolinan. And if I can, can I ask the Sergeant at Arms if you can please have these ribbons placed at the entrances of this legislature? And I'd like my colleagues to join me if I can ask the Vice Speaker, Senator Munia Barnes, Senator Tom Ada, and Senator Tony Ada to join me, please, as we take, breathe the candle, the lighting of the candle, to drape his chair over his desk. Can you please join me? Thank you very much, Senators. Tom, Sergeant at Arms will give everyone a ribbon, so to speak, in memory of Speaker Ben. And at this time, if anyone, I would like to invite anyone, if you have any brief remarks that you'd like to relay or any condolences. And of course, you're welcome at any time. Senator Duñez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I would like to take this opportunity to, first of all, say a sincere, heartfelt condolence to the Pangolinan family, to all of his friends, and, of course, to the people of Guam who are now in mourning. Madam Speaker, I can truly say from the bottom of my heart, it's been an honor to be on this floor and learn from a good friend, a great leader. I ran for office many times, and had I made it before, I don't know if I would have had the experience that I had when I came in here during these last two terms, to watch a man who was truly passionate, committed. And in closing, Madam Speaker, I met so many people today after this morning's beautiful hearings. I'm so glad the Vice Speaker was strong enough to carry out the hearings for the department that probably Speaker Ben loved the most, Department of Land Management, Chamor Land Trust, and Zestral Lands. And as I went about my duties after that hearing, Madam Speaker, so many people that I met expressing condolences, of course, as our, as a colleague of Speaker Ben. Some of the things that some folks said to me, "Man, you know, we've watched Ben and we know he's been struggling." You know, was, was it truly, was there other things he could do? With every closing of the comment, you would always hear, Madam Speaker, you know, Speaker Ben went doing what he loved the most, serving the people of Guam. And I, it's not my words, but I can truly feel in my heart, that's probably true. I'm sure it's true. So, Speaker Ben, wun dunkle lunasidus masi for all of your service, and you will be sorely missed, certainly from me. And thank you for all of the lessons that you've taught me on this floor. Situs masi, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. Senator Limtjako.
Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to recognize Senator Pangolinan. It was a, truly an honor in the short period of time that I had to work with him to see someone who had such a good grasp of our public laws and a passion for fighting for what he believed in. I know that on the floor, Senator Pangolinan and I disagreed on many things, but I always knew he had my resp, that he respected me, and he always knew that I respected him deeply. You know, when I was up at the viewing earlier today, I couldn't help but notice that he was at peace, much like my father was at peace when he was at our, his funeral. And my prayers and condolences go out to the family. He will be surely missed and deeply respected. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. Senator.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. On behalf of my family, I'd like to also extend a condolence to the family of Speaker Pangolinan. You know, I respected him so much. It was really an honor to be able to serve with him this term and also during the last term. I wanted to share with you, when I first met Speaker Pangolinan is when he ran for Congress. Remember, my dad was very active in his campaign, and the first time I met him and heard him speak was at this function over at the Little House on the Perry. I think many people wouldn't know where that is, right next to the Bank of Hawaii in Haga Ni. And just, just listening to him and hearing him, I mean, you knew that his passion was very strong and what he wanted to do in serving the people of Guam. And here in this body, in my first term, he taught me a lot. I remember when we went through the reform of the Guam Election Commission, the reform in the law, I sat up there in chairing as the Chair of the Committee on Election Reform, and I would always look at him because he would always guide me in the procedural, in the procedural process. And so when he, you know, when it was apparent that I was, you know, needed some help, I looked over and he would signal and me and let me know what, you know, what needed to be done. And so, you know, he'll surely be missed. We know we had our differences as well on this floor, but at the end of the day, always knew that his, his interest was always for the betterment of our, of our island, the betterment of our people. And so he would be missed, and, you know, my prayers are with, with him, of course, and his family. And remember that time, that, that first election that I was involved in, in his for Congress, it was, I believe, Bangatzung. And I would say that he was a good friend, and he was my friend. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Senator. Senator Munia Barnes.
Situs masi, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak about a man who I worked with for, on five different terms. When we first came in, when I first came in, in the 27th Guam Legislature, he was our Speaker. And, because a lot of you know that we both got pumped up in the 28th Guam Legislature, but he shared something with me about always believing in yourself and never giving back. And then the 28th Guam Legislature, we ran again and we both got in, and everybody said that was a very hard thing to do. I also want to share with you, Madam Speaker, that he was a man who shared with me that he said, you know, "At least I appreciate Senator, you Senator Barnes, for not, for always telling me where you're at and never blindsiding me." And I first thought it was a joke. One day, he was sitting in that chair where you're sitting, Madam Speaker, and he was presiding over the Committee of the Whole, and he called me and asked me to chair, and I looked at him and with awe and surprise, he said, "I know you're strong enough to keep it together." And I just want to say to his family, wun dunkle lunasidus masi, for sharing him with the island of Guam, more importantly, to our colleagues here, a man who never gave up, a man who always fought for the Chamor people, a man who always fought to protecting the land, always, always making sure that the island people were first, always making sure that the lands that we have here on our island would be for our people, but more importantly, for a man who taught many of us a lot, never to give up, continue to fight, and be, and be very strong. So, on behalf of my family, we extend our condolences and know that our thoughts and prayers continue to be with Speaker Ben and his family, and that we will continue to pray for his family during this time of sorrow. Situs ununitisi for giving me the opportunity to speak about a good friend, situs masi.
You're welcome, Senator. Senator Mike Senefus.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, when I, when I first got in here, I would have never imagined how attached I would have, I would have grown to Speaker Ben Pangolinan. The, the impression that a lot of us get without, without knowing the man is one of a strong, a strong leader who is passionate and dedicated, but when you get to know the man, something magical happens. You realize that not only is he strong and dedicated and so committed to what he believes in, but he has a heart of gold, and you could see it in his smile, and you can hear it in his humor. And if you had the privilege of being able to be exposed to the full picture of who Ben Pangolinan is, you were, you were, you were so fortunate to really know a very, very incredible person. And I'm incredibly blessed that I had the opportunity to work with him in, in my first term. And it was, it was just such an incredible experience because we speak the same language, Speaker Ben and I. You know, we, we understand numbers, we understand the importance of getting a return. We also understand how you can't, you can't be, you can't take, take money for granted, the people's money for granted. And Speaker Ben was very, very passionate about that, and I just loved to, I, it was just a blessing to be able to sit right behind him, to be able to just walk up to him and get his guidance as often as I needed. There were, there were more than one occasion where I was a little uncomfortable about something, but I would go to him and get his reassurance, and I'd say, "Speaker Ben, is this, is this okay with you?" Because I'm, I'm not so sure. And he'd be like, "Yeah, it's okay with me." And that would be all it took, you know, that would be all it took for me to be, to be okay with it, too. And, and now that he's gone, it's, it really just, for me at least, leaves an incredible void because we've come to rely on him so much, I think all of us have in our own way. And even if we didn't always agree with him, we, we knew that, that we had to listen very carefully to where he was coming from because if Ben is sharing a perspective, there has to be meaning behind it, and, and we need to, we need to respect that meaning. We need to respect the man. And so, his passing, I mean, we, we knew he wasn't well, but Ben being Ben and as strong as he's always been, today, I think, took a lot of us by surprise. It definitely took me by surprise. And it just speaks volumes to the weight of his service to the people of Guam, when, at least speaking for myself, I sit here and I need to really reconcile and ask myself, "So what happens now? Now that Speaker Ben is gone, what happens now?" Because he provided so much direction, so much foundation. He was a rock in this body. No matter what state of health he was in, he always committed to being that rock. So we're going to miss you a great deal, Mr. Speaker. We're going to miss you in this hall, we're going to miss you in caucus. We're going to miss your, your jokes and your smile, and we're going to mourn your loss, and we're going to figure out what to do next. But I ask that we not only pray for his soul, but we ask him to also pray for us. I ask our Lord to let Speaker Ben be an angel among us and an angel in this hall always, that he may be allowed by our Heavenly Father to continue to guide us and to give us that courage, that Ben Pangolinan courage, to speak the truth and to stand for what's right, no matter how uncomfortable it may make somebody, or how alone he may be in taking that position. May we have that spirit among us always. May our good Lord bless us with so much. And while we mourn his loss, let us rejoice in his rest, because if anybody has earned the right to rest, it's Speaker Ben Pangolinan. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. Senator Frank Block, Algon Jr.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, obviously, we're mourning for the loss of a great public servant, and I think it's a great day. I really think it's a great day because the island of Guam and the people of Guam are mourning, but the people in heaven are rejoicing. I can imagine Speaker Ben Pangolinan right now being in an active and a lively debate with some of those people, some of the angels or some of the saints in heaven, because that's how he always has been. And when I was thinking about his passing away this morning, there's a couple of phrases that, that the Speaker really came to mind, the common phrase that has been used on many, many occasions. Man of the people, by the people, for the people. I was in a separate conversation not too long ago about trying to describe Speaker Pangolinan and how he made his contribution to our community. And you know, Madam Speaker, the, the thoughts that came to mind was that this was a great public servant that had the mindset of a lawyer, had the heart for the common people, and also had a work ethic like a Clydesdale. And that, though, that particular phrase, the mindset of a lawyer, he came in here actively prepared to discuss any piece of legislation and doing his research. And that's one of the reasons why he stepped forward and he assumed the responsibility with the concurrence of the members of this body, to chair perhaps the most difficult committee that any member of this legislative body can chair. And he did not only chair the Committee on Finance, but the Committee on Appropriations, which is difficult in and of itself, but he also chaired, as a side note, the Committee on Land. When I said he had the heart for the common people, that was his focus. His service here in this body, in the short time that I've had the opportunity to serve side by side with this great public servant, Speaker Ben Pangolinan, he always focused on our common people. What is it that we need to do to get these services out to our community? How can we better serve our community? When he came to the Chamor Land Trust Commission, he championed also, in addition to another member of this body today, he championed that concept because he wanted to see our Chamoros benefit from that program and be able to provide for their families. And when I say he had a work ethic like a Clydesdale, every single day, every single moment that I visited him, either in his office or that I saw him here in this body, Madam Speaker, he certainly worked and worked and worked. Those are the descriptions that I have for a great individual who has served our island in a tremendous way. And Madam Speaker, our prayers and our condolences go out to the family, but I go back to that statement that I made a little earlier, that this is a great day because now he is at rest, now he's, he's at peace, and then now he's also has a lot of other people that he can perhaps debate with and share his thoughts in heaven. So, Madam Speaker, I don't know if this is the appropriate statement to make, but when another great public servant passed away not too long ago, and he had served our community for 14 years, the session hall was named in his honor, great public servant. And I think that also a special tribute can be extended to Speaker Pangolinan in a similar way because he was always representative, a representative of the people, and perhaps considering a tribute of naming the public hearing room in his honor may be a welcome addition to his memory. So I'd like to throw out that thought, Madam Speaker, and certainly in recognizing a tremendous public servant, a wonderful gentleman, and a very respectful colleague. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. Senator Tony Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, to the family, to the Pangolinan family, our heartfelt and sincere condolences on the loss of Speaker Ben. Though I only served a short time with him, it was such an honor and a privilege to hear him debate on this floor, actually being here as part of that debate. Though many of my colleagues have said many things about him, there's, I don't think there is enough time in this day or in this week or the rest of this year to name all of his accomplishments, to say all the things that he had done, not only for the people, but for the island. I hope that his works will always be remembered and continued because he was a man of the And I know that he will always be looking down upon us and maybe kicking our chair or something and say, "Hey, that's not right," you know, give us some sign that we're going in, in the direction that is good for our people. So, Speaker Ben, just wanted to say... "May the choirs of angels come to greet you. May they speed you to paradise. May the Lord unfold you in his mercy. May you find eternal life." God bless you for everything you've done, Speaker Ben. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. Senator Morrison.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I want to thank the family, Pangolinan family, for allowing a great leader to serve to his last breath. I try to think how far back, or try to see how far back it can go to when I first came across Speaker Ben, and I still recall that I wasn't even able to vote, and I think it was his first attempt to seek public office, to serve the people of Guam in Congress. But I still recall a little boy, touching myself, just looking at this gentleman, patting me on the shoulder, and knowing full well I couldn't vote, still encouraged me to get out there and vote, support the people that can serve your island. I remember that very clearly, Madam Speaker. And sometimes we, we look back and think, was that just a moment that just happened or for the sake of happening? But I, I see that moment as a beginning of a great leader.
Thank you very much, Senator. Anybody else, please? Mr. Vice Speaker.
I was actually hoping not to speak, especially after hearing some of my young colleagues talk about how they've known him for a couple of terms, and I realized I met him before some of them were born, when this brilliant young man came back from Georgetown and was working for Mr. Gumbiner. And just listening to him talk with Mr. Gumbiner and the Governor, Ricky Bredalio, about what was happening up at, then when it was FHP, just amazed at the intellect. about what was happening up at, then when it was FHP, just amazed at the intellect that he possessed. And I listened to some of the colleagues talk about the fact that he had the man mind of a lawyer. He was more brilliant than most lawyers that I've known. His command of the law was unbelievable. He recalled and could cite cases better than I could, especially when it came to issues about the Chamorro Land Trust and the plebiscite. And this morning, when Lisa called me to tell me about his passing, I was shocked because both you and I received emails from him yesterday on the bill that we were considering, giving us his thoughts on those pieces of legislation. I mean, I was really hoping that he would be coming back and assuming his position because yesterday I was still getting emails about how he felt about the piece of legislation and what each one of those things meant. Last evening, I received my binder from him and the committee listing all the questions and that he wanted me to ask of the confirmation, people whose names are up for confirmation today. And it was very evident by the questions that were on each one of those sheets for every single one of the nominees, that he had personally phrased each one of those questions. And at first, I was going to cancel the hearing this morning, but thankfully Cynthia Machida and Mike Borha convinced me that, as Senator Dornius mentioned, this Chamorro Land Trust was everything that Ben Panglinen stood for. He was more protective of that agency than I think even the budget. And he was very concerned about the fact that it hadn't had a quorum to conduct its And when I offered my services to him and to the committee to assist in moving things forward, the first thing that he wanted me to do this morning was to conduct the public hearing on the confirmation of the three members that were nominated to the board because he wanted to make sure that that board continued to work. Because he realized how important that Chamorro Land Trust was and how important that was to the people of Guam. And I think, if anything, all of us should commit ourselves to making sure that the mission of the Chamorro Land Trust and the plebiscite move forward. Those were two things that he was absolutely passionate about. And I have to admit that just about every day that I came into session, I was always embarrassed because he had the whole stack of committee reports next to him. And he went through every single one of those, and he knew where the commas were missing and where the words were that were out of place in every single bill. It was unbelievable, the work ethic that the man had. And so, though people thought it was strange that we had the hearing this morning, and I'll be conducting again hearings for his committee tomorrow morning, I'm intent on fulfilling his last instructions to me on those public hearings, and will take the cue that he has devoted himself and hopefully try to move forward on the two things that he was very compassionate about, very passionate about, I mean. And that was the Chamorro Land Trust, the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission, and the plebiscite, the referendum for our self-determination. And it's given me new purpose, and so I thank him for the more than thirty-five years that he's devoted to this community. And I'm hoping that some of the young members of this legislature will be able to continue the work that he's done. And I know that some of them have worked with the Chamorro Land Trust before, and hopefully that they will pick up the banner and carry that forward. For some, if their interest is in the plebiscite, I'm hoping that one of them will take up that charge. And there is no one that's going to be able to understand the budget the way that he understood the budget and bonds. And I was still getting the emails yesterday afternoon about the questions that I was supposed to ask. I, you know, I expropriated those questions because those were the comments that he sent me in an email. And Guam has lost probably the best leader of that generation. And I'm able to say that generation because they were almost a generation behind me. I hate to admit that. But the young people have much to live up to in the memory that we sent to Gavir Panglinen had, and I'm hoping that some, if not most of you, will take up the causes that he fought so hard for in his memory. I think we should all try to commit ourselves to doing that. So thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to express some thoughts, as somebody said it would take all day or several days. But I also want to extend my condolences to the Panglinen family and to his friends and to assure them that in what little time that I have in this legislature, that I will try as much as I can to continue the work that he has done, though I know that those shoes are absolutely impossible to fill. I will try to stumble along and hopefully try to make a small dent in it. Again, thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for this opportunity to speak.
You're welcome. Mr. Vice Speaker. Senator Tom Adat.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I had the privilege of being elected into office along with Senator Ben Panglinen back in the twenty-first Guam Legislature. We were two freshman senators that got elected to serve amongst a very seasoned and senior group of senators. I think one of the trademarks of Senator Panglinen throughout his career in the legislature is that he was always very steadfast in the positions that he took. And he was able to do that because he was very diligent in studying the issues and being able to speak on the issue and defend it. I know that in the twenty-first, and that started even in his freshman year, he would become, he was really steadfast in the ideas and the positions that he wanted to move forward. In fact, he was so steadfast that many times we both were put in the closet because we wouldn't listen to the more senior senators. But nonetheless, that didn't stop him. He continued forward and remained steadfast in the positions that he took. I think in looking back over the years at the, just the trademark of this gentleman and how he went about his work, again, he would take on a position, he would study it very well, he would defend it, and he would remain steadfast even if it meant his demise. And for that, I think that certainly is very admirable and is something that we should all model ourselves after, to take on a position, a belief, and stand by it regardless of what the consequences might be. So I know that I've learned a lot from him. I know that he's also got a soft side to him. I remember coming back from one trip from Palau, and I brought back some crabs, stuffed crabs, and I went over and I brought it for his father. And so I brought enough for him to also, because I knew that he visited his father every evening. And, you know, Ben was not one to, I mean, he was an appreciative sort of individual, but he does not, you know, walk out of his way to say, "Thank you." And this time, he actually says, "You know, I really enjoyed that. So where can we get more of that stuff?" But I think certainly he was a model to follow after, and he certainly has left his mark in this legislature and in our community. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. Senator Hamishita, would you like to give a brief remark?
Ben and I were in the class of nineteen seventy-four. I know many people know that. We did some things together in high school. We both went off to college, and we both came home because Guam's our home. Thank you. See, I wasn't going to do this because I knew this was what's going to happen. And when I had the honor of being elected, and I came in, many of you were very welcoming, but Ben terrified me. He was so serious about everything. He, what everybody has already said, he was so intense, serious, concerned about our island that every second, he made sure that was conveyed. He enjoyed his work and he loved his work. He lived his work. I remember, and I'm sure you all remember this, last term, thank you, it was late at night, one of those rare late at night sessions, I think it was Budget, and we absolutely frustrated him, six of us on the right side. And he was going off in Chamorro. And I remember the text messages because I don't know what he was saying, but about how those of us who are just cutting our teeth, that you don't know what you're talking about. But he was so right. We were trying to make our points, and we weren't following the rules, we weren't doing it quite the right way. And I always remembered that. In this term, my second term, I've said to our colleagues, my message from Speaker Ben that evening was, "You have to understand the whole picture. You have to understand the processes. You have to do the research, and you have to do your homework. You have to make the compelling case, and you cannot waste the time. Be prepared when you come in here. Be prepared to do the work the right way. Be prepared to argue, and be prepared to deliberate. This is not a sandbox. Be prepared." And I learned that from him. I think that man knew all the rules and regs. I think he breathed them. A couple sessions ago, one of us was calling for a call of the house, and he said, "Check your rules because if we have a quorum, there is no call of the house." We had a quorum, we had eight in here. He just was very serious, and within time, I learned how to become stronger because of him. I learned that from him. This is very serious business. And you need to know, you really need to know, you need to be on your toes, don't waste the time. And I appreciated his impatience like that. But also, as Senator Tom said, there is a side to him that wasn't on the session floor or at the public hearings, but was in the caucus room. I remember once he called me and he said, "Senator," and he called me, and I just looked at him because he never called me. So this time, he was calling me. So in my head, I was very quickly flipping through what I had said and what I had done to prepare myself for defense. And I said, "Yes," and he says, "Come in here, I want to talk to you." And so I held my breath, we went into our caucus room, and I said, "Yes, sir," and he said, "You cannot use your address for your newsletter." And I just looked at him and I said, "I'm not using my address for my newsletter." And he very patiently looked at me and he said, "Yes, you are." "No, I'm not." "Yes, you are." "No, I'm not." "Senator, I just saw your newsletter." And I said, "Well, I don't think I am, but I'll go check it." And of course, I checked, and of course, he was right. So we removed the address and put on personal address. But there were things like that. We had, I forget one of the crisis issues, but we were in joint caucus, and at that time, Senator Frank Losch Jr. was minority leader, and I served as his assistant. And we were with Madam Speaker and Speaker Ben. And it was a very long, three weeks, must have been the bond issue. And we recessed, we were to come back at nine o'clock and meet with Madam Speaker, and I remember we were in caucus first in Senator Tony's office, and I had a crisis situation with my son. So of course, I went, and the police were going to arrest Eric, and it was just a horrible situation. So we got that all under control, and then I went into Speaker Guam Pat's office, and I just stared at them, and I said, "I'm really sorry. I'm really sorry that I'm late." And he just looked at me and he said, "Senator, please take care of your boy. You do not need to be here." But he said it with such a voice that, you know, he really meant that. He really did mean that. And as Senator Tom said, you know, I remember sitting and waiting for the public hearings to start, and he would talk to me about his dad, just taking him traveling. Didn't really want to go, Dad really didn't really want to go, but he says, "No, we're going." And they traveled. Just from him, be serious about this work. You worked hard to get here. Work hard when you get here. Be serious about this work. And so I appreciated that. Be serious about where we are on Guam, where we've come from, and where we need to get. And while, truth be told, sometimes his energy just unsettled me because he was so obstinate about certain things, that message stood. Be serious about what you want to do. Focus on how you're going to get us there, and then go for it. I also have to say, Mr. Speaker, that, boy, the people you surround yourselves with are very telling, and his staff are an outstanding staff. You just, Lisa, Selena, Ricky, Ariana, Chris, before he left us, I mean, those people are just really, they are really good people. True to the work, prepared for the work, and they did the work. Absolutely. Absolutely loyal to that office. And when they realized I was safe, we would talk. Nothing about the office, because that was clear, loyal to the office. But offline, they're just really good people who care about Guam. And that's very telling about a boss. So, Madam Speaker, thank you for calling me out. I really wasn't going to do this because I don't do this very well. But I learned a lot. And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Class of Seventy-four. Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. This is not going to be an easy one. You know, I've served with Ben, of course, in my first term, the twenty-third Guam Legislature in nineteen ninety-five. And, you know, we go back a little bit further back, not as much as you, but, you know, he had worked for my father as an intern in Washington, D.C. And my mother, you know, would always invite staff, friends, or anyone who would come to Guam and had invited, of course, Ben over for dinner. And Ben would always pick on me, of course, and joke with everybody, especially when our colleagues are around him, to say that, you know, at that time, of course, Ben, at that time, was much bigger and he would say that I said to my mother, "Don't feed that fat boy," you know, because she doesn't want meat and food. And he'll do that all the time with our colleagues. And that's the other side of Ben, the soft side of Ben, that many of us really don't know. And so, he truly is a dear friend. And he was always there as well. And another colleague of mine here, Senator Tom Madad, as well, because we were of that, not generation, but that period of time in the legislature when I lost my husband. He's, you know, these are the only two that are left here and they were very supportive of that and very comforting. And although many of you know Ben, being a very serious person, and, you know, he really was. You know, he always reminded me, he was very strict with me. But people don't know that, I guess, because of the time when he had interned in my father's office, that I really needed to live up to my father's expectations, always reminding me to put the people first. And, you know, that's exactly what he did his whole life as a public servant. I mean, you know, you look at his office and you see the sign, what's it say? The People's Office. You know, it was never really about Ben. And although some people may want to try to analyze why maybe he wrote his name in lowercase versus, you know, capitalizing it, but that's just the way Ben was, is that the people came first and he was just a servant. And he was a true public servant of the people. So, Ben was just not a friend, but of course, a mentor. And, you know, some of you mentioned that he would always tell us, would tell me, was that, "Read, do your homework, be prepared when you go in there and listen, listen to the arguments." That's one thing I'll never forget, is listen to all the arguments that are being presented by our members. Read the committee report, formulate your decision. And then, of course, you know, defend your decision, fight for your decision. And everybody here knows this about Ben. We joke about it, is that when the writing's on the wall, of course, is when we know how a bill is going already, is going to pass and Ben may not be in favor of it. But the one thing that I really admire about Ben is that, even though he's not supporting the bill, he would always work it. He'll try to make it the best bill. He'll make it a stronger bill because he knows that once it passes, then it becomes law. And he wants to make sure then that we're going to do it right for the people. And that's the one thing that I've really admired about, you know, Speaker Ben. You're right, I mean, I listened to him speak, you yourself, when you said how intelligent this man is. And, I mean, the man has a memory of an elephant, but I want you to know, he's truly a donkey. And, you know, when he, when he would speak, I can't believe how he'd pull out quotes, you know, and sayings. And I just can't, I would just sit back and admire how, I don't know how this guy, man, did it. He has institutional knowledge of what past legislatures have done, not just the legislature, but historically as well. And so, you can't help, of course, but, you know, be amazed by what this man, you know, has done. And many of us, sometimes, we get angry with him. I remember my first term, the first session of my first term, you know, as stubborn as I am too. And Ben and I would argue on an issue. That was my very first time with him. It was so bad. And, you know, we parted, we went to his office and I did too. And Lou, at the time, of course, you know, was with us. And she went and scolded Ben and says, "You know, you should never speak to Julie like that, you know. You need to respect her opinion." And then, he sends flowers, you know, to me as a form of an apology. And, but that's just, you know, Ben. You know, we'll argue, but the next moment, you know, then he'll be fine. And for those of us who may be slighted sometimes when we argue with him and even the governors, when they feel that he is hard on them or holding their feet to the fire, I'll tell you, Kamachi, you know, did hear from Ben. He's asked me that, "Why is Ben that way, you know, why couldn't he do this?" But let me tell you, those two shouldn't feel slighted at all because, oh, there's a party man. He did the exact same thing to Governor Gutierrez. So, that's the man that wants to do the people right. It's not about him. He's not, he's not, he has not benefited himself at all in the work that he's done. It's always been the people first. And I guess maybe because his mentor was also former Governor Ricky Bredalio, whose campaign has been about the people and putting people first. And Speaker Ben has done that. I admire the fact, of course, that, you know, Ben, when he would speak, especially yes, about the Chamorro Land Trust and he was speaking Chamorro. And he blows everybody up and telling you because of his command of the Chamorro language. It was so impeccable. And he can go on, literally, you know, not the usual fifteen minutes because others would signal to me by saying, "You need to call him on the time." But I just loved to listen to him speak in Chamorro and allowed him, of course, to speak even more so. And although sometimes, you know, people are cruel, they criticize the fact that he's, you know, from Saipan. But I'll tell you, you know, he grew up here. He truly loves Guam. He loves the Chamorro people. He's a statesman, a true Democrat. And I say this because, I mean, just a couple of weeks ago, you would say, you know, "I don't understand this." You know, we're in there, we caucus and we decide we're going to go this way. Then what happens if I don't even bother, you know, to have a caucus? And so, he's probably the last party man that we're going to see in a long time. And I'm really saddened to say that because he's a truly loyal Democrat. And he's a servant of the people, so Guam and Sina might have lost a son. And I would say that I'm very fortunate to have served with him. And to Ben, of course, I know your pain is gone, but right now, I'm feeling the pain because I'm sorry you have left us, but yes, I realize that you've completed your mission on this earth. Guam will miss you and I know, I will surely miss you. So, my condolences to the family. We will continue to send prayers, of course, as we all go through the grieving process and, you know, come to terms, of course, of not having to see, you know, Speaker Ben here in the halls. Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I think we've exhausted the... Will there be a motion, Mr. Majority Leader, or recess until, or Madam Speaker, until eleven tomorrow morning? The legislature stands in recess until eleven tomorrow morning. Thank you.